Okay, I gotta wrap my head around what's going on here. Is that you? Yeah. Have you heard from Cassandra?
I sent her a message.
Okay. Are we ready?
Hmm.
Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:33. The Planning Commission, March 18th, 2025 meeting is now in session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call. Commissioner Huggins. Appears to be absent and I don't see him on the screen. Commissioner Devoines. You're Commissioner Freiburger.
Present.
Commissioner Fatisi.
Present.
Commissioner Jasper.
Present.
Commissioner Fernet, present. Commissioner Sexton. Absent. Okay. We have two items on the consent agenda. Did everyone have a chance to read? We'll start with the first one, the minutes of the February 18th meeting. Do we have any comments on those meeting minutes?
I do. So, I will try to make this as straightforward as possible. On... Let me just pull it up here. The motion to approve the February 18th... Or no. Sorry about that. On the February 18th PC minutes. It's really a typo, but thought it should be fixed. Okay. So... The parking. I apologize, my notes are... A little... Okay. So, it's on the packet. It's, yeah, the February 18 minutes and... Under where it says, "Planning Commissioner suggests that staff make changes to the following." Item number three there should say subsection C and then the numeral four B instead of C4B.
Oh, I thought I had it wrong, but this is wrong.
I... So, and then I guess the bigger thing is, is that these were not suggestions. This was a motion on... And... The motion was... So, so my suggestion is that Commissioner Freiburger moved to recommend to City Council to approve the parking amendments with the stated changes and second by Commissioner Jasper. Motion carried seven to zero. So, because it doesn't state that it's a motion in there, so...
Can you sit down?
Yes. Yes. And then on the February 25th Planning Commission minutes, that just the title should say, "Special Meeting of the Planning Commission," rather than "Regular Meeting."
Or is that a work session? What's the difference?
Work session, you would not take action.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm not sure if somebody is speaking, but if you guys can remember to turn on your mics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Woody. Commissioner Sexton is here. Is that correct? Online?
She's still muted. But she appears to be here as a guest.
We'll make a note of that, Commissioner Sexton. If you are there.
Sorry about that. Sorry. I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry.
We got you.
Sorry, I had another meeting that ran late. Was trying to get there in person today, but...
Okay. No worries. We'll count she is here.
Thanks. And I will fix my camera here.
So, we're just asking to catch you up if, unless you heard, we're just talking about the minutes from the 18th and the 25th, if you have any comments.
I do not.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Freiburger. Okay. Good catches? Anything else? Okay. So, do we have to make a motion to approve those minutes with those corrections? The 18th first and then the 25th? Or we want them both together?
You can, you can say, "Motion to approve consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes" as discussed.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections made for the 18th and the 25th minutes?
I make a motion to approve both the 18th and 25th consent agendas with the modifications proposed whereby Commissioner Freiburger will forward the changes for the meeting of the 18th to reflect the conversation we just put on the record.
Okay. Commissioner Fatisi makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Freiburger, second sat. All in favor to accept them as correct with the corrections as stated? I'll say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Passes six to zero. Unanimous at 6:40. So, we'll need these.
Okay.
Next up. General public comments. "Please keep comments to three minutes or less because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email to nmcgowan@cedrowooly.gov. Attention, public comment until 4:30 PM the day before the meeting." Do we have any of that to discuss that you know of, Tom?
No.
None of that and nobody online? We have a guest.
If anybody online wants to do public comment, just raise your hand and I will allow you to unmute your mic.
There's a hand. Tina Tate?
Hi. I am Tina Tate. I am the CEO of Skagit Habitat for Humanity and I am just very interested in looking at how affordable homeownership might be able to fit into the complaints. So, I'm super excited to follow this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no further comments, we can close general public comments at 6:42. Public hearing, there's no public hearing tonight, right?
Right.
So, we'll skip over that one and go to G, unfinished business. "Review land capacity analysis to include an overview of assumptions and densities accounting for critical areas and other factors." 6:43.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. This is Tom Glover, Director. I've invited Matt Covert from Facet, who is our consulting team on the comprehensive plan, to present to you some additional analysis regarding the land capacity analysis overview with an overview of assumptions and densities and accounting for critical areas and other factors. This is the second time that we've discussed this and I'm hoping to come away tonight with a clearer understanding of what we need to be possibly recommending to the council or at least the next step here with the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Glover. And good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matt Covert. I am, let me back up from this mic a little bit. I'm a senior planner with Facet and leading the consulting teams' work on the comprehensive plan in coordination with city staff. We met with you all and happy to be here in person. We met with you all several weeks ago, two months ago or so, to talk, kind of break off the discussion about, about the potential approaches to accommodating your growth target. And we thought we'd spend some more time tonight on two pieces specifically. One is this and then the land capacity analysis and then the second part is some options that you can consider aside from, you know, large-scale rezones that can help you accommodate your, your growth target. So, the first piece of this, if you could advance the slide, please. So, as I meant, that's one more, one more advance, please. So, yes, there's kind of two objectives here tonight and I'll add to the first one, actually, since it sounds like, you know, there may be something that, that, that we can learn from, there's mutual learning going on here. So, Planning Commission and the consultant team will learn more about, you know, the land capacity analysis and the assumptions and, and how, kind of how we did the calculations. I'll try to walk through a CliffsNotes version of this with you all and have the opportunity to, to help me learn places where we may need to make some, some corrections and how to get everybody on the same page, kind of about the methodology, the assumptions and kind of the exercise that went into this. And then the second objective, we'll get to this in the next item of business, item of business on the agenda, but is about housing and land use options for closing the gap between capacity and housing allocations, such as that gap may be. Next slide, please. And I'll just, I'll just say here at the offset that, that I don't have a, because this isn't a... The second, the next agenda item is kind of a, we'll go item by item and ask the same couple of questions. This is a, if I present something on a slide and one of you has a question or some additional piece of information that may be helpful, feel free to interrupt me and, and we can just make this a, a learning conversation for everyone. Next slide, please. So, the, this is kind of the, there's this two-step that goes into the foundational part of every comprehensive plan is essentially, how much growth are we planning for and what do we have capacity for now? What's the difference and how do we make up that difference? In, in many ways, that's kind of the, operationally, the core thing of what you do in a comprehensive plan. And as the Planning Commission, you have a lot of, you obviously have a, this is in your court, a lot of this, you know, potential code changes, potential programs that the city may want to invest in, like, we need to discuss this with you and get your, your, your buy-off on it before it ends up going into the final plan. One of the main pieces of this, and this is required by state law, is to analyze your land capacity. So, you have to show that in your plan that you have the capacity to accommodate the population, housing and employment growth for a 20-year period. The, this is, it's not just required in the statute, the, it's outlined in the administrative code and the state has a bunch of helpful guidance on this and there's a lot of, because every community has to do this, there's a lot of variations on a theme, but there's also a lot of best practices out there. And so, you know, we try to build off of what works, not reinvent the wheel and make changes and tweaks as necessary. Sometimes, you know, there's incomplete information in the public record and there's information that, you know, assessor data may be incomplete or delayed and there may be information about pipeline projects that we don't have yet. And so, there's, there's definitely a back and forth in this, but, you know, the important thing is that we're building on, you know, successful past work and making tweaks as appropriate to account for current conditions. Next slide, please. So, how much growth is Cedrooli planning for? We had this, I believe we discussed this with you at the last meeting that we had with you a month or two ago. Your, your population in 2022, which was the basis for, I know it's increased since then, but the, the way that the county process of allocating population and, and employment targets works is that 2022 is the baseline year. Your population was 12,596. The 2045 growth target is 16,596 for a total growth over that period of 4,000. You, you've added a few hundred people since 2022, so that number is smaller on the other side of the ledger as well. But that's your, kind of your growth target that shows up in all of the countywide planning policy documents. Your employment targets, 2022, you had 4,640 jobs. The 2045 target is 7,040 for a total growth of 2,399 jobs.
Hey, Matt?
Yes?
One quick question before you go to the next slide.
Yes.
Population allocation?
Hmm.
I'm looking at that page on what we were sent and it says that's a 14% growth. Can you explain to me how they came, how they do the math?
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a couple of different ways of looking at, looking at growth. The, the, it's probably, that's probably like a compound annual growth rate or something because obviously 4,000 is more than 14% of 12,596.
It's like 31% there.
It's 31%. Yeah. I don't know. Director Glover, do you have the, the document there so I can take a look at that, that percentage? Just so I'm looking at the correct thing. Thank you. Yeah. So, this, this comes from the, the Council of Governments document. Oh, yeah. So, that is the percent of total growth in the county.
Oh.
So, that's not percent of your 2022 baseline. It's what percent of the overall population growth in the county is accounted for in Cedrooli.
Okay.
So, it's 14% in, in the city and 2% in the unincorporated UGA for a total of, it says 15, that's probably rounded down. There's a decimal point in there somewhere that's not in their report. But, yeah, so it's 14% of overall Skagit County growth.
Oh.
It's just, this is only a portion of the table, right? So, I didn't list out, you know, Mount Vernon, Burlington, Anacortes, Concord, all the, all the other jurisdictions.
Okay. Because the, the way the table is, it's confusing. It looks like somebody did the wrong math.
You're correct. That is very confusing. Yeah. So, let me, let me make a note to, to maybe put a footnote there and explain that we've, we've eliminated a lot of rows in this table that would otherwise add up to 100 for the purpose of focusing on Cedrooli. I will make that note. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Table one. Footnote on growth percentage. Okay. Thank you. Next slide, please. Now, the housing allocations, this is where things get interesting because as, as we've discussed with the Planning Commission before, one of the things that makes this update very different from updates before is that in the past, the state said you had to show you have enough capacity for total population and total employment growth and the housing in that situation was just a function of the population. You had to show that you had enough housing units with your household size to account for the total population. That was prior to this update cycle. This update cycle, the state has, through House Bill 1220, required that, that all fully-planted jurisdictions have to provide for housing, housing capacity for all economic segments of the community. So, your housing number and your population number don't necessarily match. So, it's a little bit confusing. In some cases, communities have, like Cedrooli is far from alone in this. You have a, a pretty, you know, several hundred units deficit for like low income, which is what the state considers anything under 80% AMI, area median income, considers to be low income. So, you have, but you also have, you're also going to have growth in single-family homes and so you have to plan for that as well. So, the net effect of that is that the number of, like, if you were to multiply the number of housing units you have to plan for by your household size, that number would be a little bit bigger than 4,000 because the state says you have to show that you have capacity for all these different income bands and that may or may not match up with your population total. Some of that's just because of, you know, because communities in general have had a hard time keeping up with the demand for income for people making below 80% AMI. And so, some, and also some communities, this isn't so much a problem here, but like, you know, I'm working with communities that have, like, a third of their housing stock is short-term rentals and so that works against them. Now, so that's not a problem here, but just so that you know that there's like, so there's a bunch of factors the state considers when they kind of, there's this tool that they provide where you get these outputs that show what the, and this is done through the countywide, the countywide planning process through the Council of Governments, kind of worked, workshop this through last year. And so, the end result is that Cedrooli, the city of Cedrooli has to plan for 2,360 housing units. If you add the bolded numbers in this table all up and you see the preponderance of that falls in the under 80% AMI area median income categories. You do also have some, some allocations in your kind of moderate to above median income, income brackets as well. So, that's, you know, between 80 to 120 is considered moderate median income and then above 120 is considered upper income and that would be your capacity for single-family homes essentially. So, that's the way the state looks at it and when these numbers get calculated through the, the methodologies that the, the state developed in concert with the, with the cities and counties, that's kind of what you end up with. So, you look at that and you go, wow, our household size is, you know, 2.6 people per household, 2,360 times 2.6 is way more than 4,000. Yes. And, and the reason why is because of that, kind of, the, the chronic underproduction, not just here, but in virtually every community of housing that's affordable for people making under 80% of whatever the median is for that county. And again, this is, these are numbers that vary. Every, every county gets their own kind of calculation of this. So, you know, median income here is not the same as the median income in, in King County or elsewhere and it, there's a lot of, a lot of variation. It also varies by household size. So, without getting into all that, just know that this is not a statewide number that you have pull from. This is a process that the county and all the cities within that county go through to, to allocate housing growth between all the jurisdictions. It's based on population, but it's also based on, as I said, you know, existing shortfalls and existing gaps in affordability. Yes? Commissioner?
Can I ask a hypothetical question?
Sure.
So, in the AMI below 80, let's say there's 1,400 houses deficient and let's say somebody, a builder comes in and he says, "I'm going to put 1,400 houses in for affordable living." Well, what if the word gets out and then we have like 5,000 people wanting to, those 1,400 homes, would we be deficient again or?
That's a good question. You mean, so, so if, if, if a huge number of units were to come online all at once and the demand were to exceed supply again, I mean, if, as long as you, let me put it this way, as long as you, as long as the city has the capacity for your housing and population growth, if, if by some miracle you were to get this like, you know, great, like, you know, mixed income development with thousands of units and, and they were all snapped up and people were like, "Oh, my gosh, I want to move to Cedrooli" because they have so much, you know, housing that's affordable to moderately low-income people or whatever the case may be, you'd still be meeting your GMA obligations. You may all, you may still have some, that may cause some additional issues for you and you might have to, you know, you know, consider some amendments to your capital facilities plan to accommodate, like, oh, wow, like, we've got, you know, more, more demand here than we thought. And so, you and the county can, there's options for adjusting UGA boundaries if there's like a weird pressure point that pops up somewhere and it's not in the 10-year periodic update cycle. At the five-year check-in, the county can revisit this stuff and you guys, you and the county could kind of work it out. So, it would be an interesting problem to have. It's a really interesting question. I, I think that if you, if you had the capacity for enough housing units that that happened, you'd be meeting your obligations for the GMA even if that suddenly created a pinch point for you in a couple of other areas.
Okay. Can I stop you there for a second?
Yeah.
Continue on with the presentation because I'm going to walk you through things that have been done since 2014 that have not been accommodated at all in any of this. We already have the capacity now with our current zone and everything we've done through 2014 to easily accommodate 16,000-plus people. We were shooting for over 20,000 back in 2014. So, it's important that you understand what was put in place since 2014, including the different housing option styles that we're still refining now with cottage clusters, park models and things like that. So, let's use this as an education session for you as well as to how this stuff... So let's use this as an education session for you as well as to how this stuff breaks out, because this is too simplistic a model, just saying R5, R7, R15, number dwelling units. That's not accurate at all as to what's in the code and how we planned on accommodating that back in 2014. So it'll be a really good discussion for you to understand how that stuff really needs to calculate, and you'll see those numbers get totally blown to the higher side, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. I mean, if there's something that, that in your, in your code, that's a PRD thing or something that is available in all zones.
I have very specific examples right down to the density calculations. This is basically what I do. I get appraisers that call me, since I've sold different properties here, as to how you value different things than when you walked in. Just make the assumption, okay, anything three acres or larger in any of these zones will be PRD. It doesn't make any economic sense not to, and we do have examples of projects as to how we yield much higher yields as far as different styles of housing as well. And we have a really good one for you, Dukes Hill RJ Group did a great job, they haven't started yet, so I have a nice little site plan for you, so you can understand to wrap your head around. PRD, that was our main weapon to handle things, and we're going to get a little bit more into detail now, but continue on, because this is good, it's a good base.
That's great.
But you'll see how you want to plug this stuff in.
Yeah, that could be really helpful, yeah. I mean, if you've got some, some, some like
Very specifics, Matt.
pro formas or site plans that can, that we can use to kind of tweak the density assumptions, that could be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll keep kind of going through the, the methodology, and when we get to that, the density point, we can talk about that, it'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Sorry, Matt.
Yes.
One hopefully quick question, but I just noticed in table two, which is basically the same number.
Yes.
I just question, was wondering why the Cedar Wully City and unincorporated, the 0 to 30% non-PSH and the 0 to 30% PSH are combined for those two, but then split out for the total?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So you'll notice, Commissioner Freiburger's referring to the fact that in the, kind of the overall table, 0 to 30 is grouped together, but in the PSH, permanent supportive housing and non-permanent supportive housing for 0 to 30, it's, it's split out, but it's, it's the, the, it's split out non-PSH and PSH, whereas it's not split out in the overall table. So that's just the particulars of how the Council of Governments discussions between the, the cities and the county went. It's not done like that everywhere, but it's, it's not also, it's also not unheard of. You know, some communities in just the general table will show the, the PSH, non-PSH split for each jurisdiction. The, the, I believe, just in, on the basis of what the countywide planning policies say is, is that the, the city, whichever city and the county are, you know, sort of administering the urban growth area, have to kind of figure out where that's going to go within them. And for the purposes of this analysis, I, I, I assume that just based on the services that need to be provided for, for PSH specifically, that all of that, even though it's listed as, 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 you know, it's not broken out in the main table, that all of that would have to be in the city because of the lack, the lack of services in the UGA. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was just kind of curious how it somehow wound up split out in the total, but not in the, the numbers that you would think would be informing that total. But it's fine, I mean, so long as they have a way of, of getting there.
Yeah, they kind of did it in, in the, in the SCOG sort of allocations report, they just kind of did it in two separate tables. So I reported it here as in one table, because it, it's kind of, the way they did it, it was kind of like, you know, this kind of, you know, okay, here's your total, and then city and county for each UGA, you figure it out. So they were separate. For the cases of this, I just pushed them all up into the same table so that you could see that, like, what numbers we were using for the capacity, or for the, for the allocations, all smushed together, rather than having it be in two separate sources.
Just a quick question on that, why does that even matter? I mean, it's very clear that the county is going to control the unincorporated areas. We made a proposal that we were going to absorb that, I want to say 10 years ago. So why are we even concerned with it? Shouldn't we just focus on the city limits of what's here? Because we're going to go through, we have plenty of capacity for all types of compliance requirements as far as population. Like I said, back to 2014 when we did that 10-year update, we were looking at a much higher number than 16,000. So we were really pleased to hear that that number came down. But we need to go back and we need to take a look at the code, what we did, and how it really needs to be calculated here to show the true capacity as to what we can already deploy, as well as what's already in place right now, that that 2025 population number that you have doesn't even include a whole bunch of projects that just went online. I want to say you can probably bump that 12,000 number by 1,000 people. So I'm not too sure these numbers are even close to accurate right now if we're looking at 16,000 further on. So let's take a look at that mechanism, is what you utilize, as well as what's in planning right now, that we know what's going online. And just a little example, the Depot and Trailhead, those are our two first UVMU projects, we can do a bunch more.
Yep.
There are already 143 units that are brand new, that aren't even part of this calculation. And I did something basic, like 1.8 occupant per unit, and I'm already at close to 260 new residents. And those are only two projects, not even saying all the other ones that aren't even built yet, that are already on the drawing board.
Yeah.
So we need to incorporate that, that's already there.
Yes, yeah, you're absolutely right. So this, this does not include that, and you'll see later that the, we, so back in, I think, I think our permit data, we went through, what was it, Tom, through like end of November or something of, of last year, when we were doing the, we were crunching the numbers on this. So we reflected in the, the kind of the, the pipeline stuff that might not show up because it's under development or it's brand new and it hasn't been reflected yet. We did account for that, so we've got the 143 UVMU units, and that gets, the nice thing about that is that it, it gets, it gets taken off, basically taken off the ledger in both directions. So you, you no longer, that land no longer has capacity, but you also have 143 fewer units that you need to plan for. So we did, we did account for that later, and so that's why that 2,360 number is, goes way down, it goes down by like 400 or 500 units, because we accounted for. There may, there may have been new things that have been in the permitting pipeline since November 30th of last year, totally possible. And if we've got additional information, you know, we'd be happy to include that. But we did, we did account for stuff that's been built recently or is currently under development later in the, in the process.
Like I said, this is the first phase of it, but we want to make sure we take into account all those factors.
Yeah.
The comp plan update isn't due until the end of the year, and, and that's why I said we were spending a bit of time on the vision statement.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get right into the really big portions, and housing is going to be one of them, but to understand what we've already put in place.
Yeah.
And how that would actually get deployed, where you have certain numbers here that you can definitely take a look at different areas and make different assumptions as how that density is going to eventually go in, just for a whole lot of economic sense from a development standpoint. We need to make that, make sure that's factored in there.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, so when we get to density, like I said, we can, we can hone in on some of these specific things. Next slide, please. So I'll, I'll kind of, this is, there's a lot of words on here, but the, the important thing is that, is that the way the land capacity analysis works, and this is all laid out in the administrative code and in kind of best practices for these, but this is not a, it's not a, the results are not reported at a parcel-by-parcel level. They're typically reported at the zone level because that's what, because of the, the weirdness of trying to look at critical areas data that you don't actually know in a lot of cases, what, whether there's a critical area somewhere until somebody goes in and investigates. You've got some best guesses, but those are often not, you know, not super accurate. There's things where they don't exist in the real world, and then there's other places where there's things in the real world that exist that don't show up on a map, or don't show up on the state's LiDAR data or whatever, right? So there's, there's, we do our best to kind of account for those, but because you can't pinpoint a specific parcel and say, hey, we know that that has exactly 2.8 developable acres because it's got critical areas, we don't actually know that in most cases. So this is a process where you combine assessor data and city permit data and make assumptions about density and about people per household, and about, about market factor, which is the, kind of the likelihood that something will or will not, will not develop within the planning period just because of somebody's decisions, and then things like infrastructure. So there's also a deduction for providing a site with infrastructure, right? So this isn't just, you take the gross acreage and multiply it by something, you've got to kind of take the developable acreage, which is your best guess of, you know, total acreage minus critical areas minus easements, and then make some assumptions about the market and about provision of infrastructure, things like access tracks or street dedication, right-of-way dedication, or stormwater, right? So you, you can't, you know, a plat will have a stormwater facility somewhere, and sometimes it can be combined with a parking lot, sometimes it can't, you know, and so there's, there's this 15% deduction, I believe it is, for, for infrastructure for any site. And the reason why we do it that way is because, again, you can't show on a map, like, this parcel is developable and this one is not, because that might not actually be true, but when you look at it at the, kind of at a higher level, right, like the zone, or if you've got planning areas or something, those numbers tend to kind of balance out a little bit, and that way you're not making any determinations about anyone's specific property on a map, you're just saying, this collection of land, whether it's an overlay or a zone or a subarea or something, you've got this collection of land in these different zones, and you apply different assumptions about density, and you get a, a number for the zone, and that avoids some of that, like, you know, this one's in, this one's out determination that is not, you can't do as part of a land capacity analysis. So that's kind of why, what the LCA does at a broad level is reports capacity with a bunch of assumptions at the, at a level that is higher than the individual parcel. Next slide. And as I mentioned, so what does the LCA not do? Does not estimate capacity at the level of specific parcels. It also doesn't account for potential changes to zoning or land use designation being considered as part of this update. So like, you know, Commissioner Fatisi, like, I know you, you mentioned the cottage thing, you guys are still working on the cottage code, that wouldn't necessarily be reflected because it hasn't been adopted. But if there's things that have been adopted, like the code changes that came out of your most recent comp plan update, you know, we want to try to accommodate those as, as well as possible, which is the combination we'll have next about the density assumptions.
But that's a good point, because that will be adopted and approved prior to when we file the 2025 comp plan update. So we're working on that now, and I fully expect that we'll have public hearings in the pretty near future. So by the time we get this completed, this element, that'll all be incorporated into it.
I think you're right, I think you're, and there's, there may be some other code changes, you know, to meet state law requirements, like ADUs and stuff like that, and that'll all get done at the same time. And, and the nice thing about that is that in the final comp plan, we can, we can, you know, tweak the draft to show that like, oh, this, this was listed as pending or in progress, it's now complete, and we estimate that this will result in X number of additional units.
We already have that on our books, we put ADUs in two years ago. So I think the state is now telling us we need to require two ADUs per parcel. Right now, our code allows one.
Yeah.
So if you take every single-family residence and add one to it, okay, all of a sudden you just double the population of every single-family home in the city of Cedar Wully that's compliant right now.
Right, yeah. The state doesn't let you do it quite that way. I, I know a lot of communities would be thrilled to be able to just say, like, oh, we've got the ADU number, our, our problem is solved, but the, the state has, makes you have, you have to kind of look back at your permit history, there's a couple other ways to do it as well. It does help, I will, I will note that the
It is what it is.
Yeah.
A lot of times we don't get to control what we'd like to.
Yeah, for sure. But on the other hand, you know, the, I always look at this as like, you know, the, on the flip side, the flip side is that that does actually help you meet your
It's on the books.
your 80% target, which is nice.
It's on the books.
Next slide. So these are the density assumptions, and this is where we can get into some of those fun things that we were discussing earlier. So, you know, what we did was just based on, based on the code, we made, there were a couple of assumptions in here, right? So the, the residential zones, we, we assumed the max density was the, was the, basically the likely density. For the, for the mixed commercial and the, the, some of the, the commercial zones, the, the code allows, I think it's a maximum of eight units per building.
Per building, right, so that's an error there.
Which is, well, and that gets a little tricky, because that totally depends on how many buildings you can get on a specific site, and so, and we can't really do this at a site-specific level. So, you know, I'm looking for maybe some guidance from you all on if you think there's a more appropriate number for that, that based on, you know, permit history or based on some of the additional work that you all have done in code, if there's some way to reflect that in, in like a multiplier, that's the really tricky part, right, is that we don't know how many buildings are going to go on this site. If it's, if it's two buildings versus five buildings, you could figure out a way to maybe get five smaller buildings on a site, and then you could get, for some reason, you know, 40 units instead of 16, right? So there's a lot of weirdness that goes on there.
That's on my list.
Okay.
Because I thought about that. See, in Cedar Wully, or mixed commercial, if you're going up Highway 20, you have basically old historical, single-family residences that are now in a mixed commercial zone.
Yes.
There are, a lot of them are already approaching their, end of their economic viability, if you look at them, and I know a bunch of properties that are pretty much maybe three houses on about four acres. So that's all in mixed commercials. So, since it's really not a huge area, basically going from, I want to say, from the railroad trestle to the city limits where a lot of stuff is developed, so we have a really good idea as to where that potential density can, can fall, as well as some of the tracks that are bigger that we can modify in calculation, I think I come up with a solid number that is absolutely defendable based upon what the forward view probably is most likely. I mean, nobody can predict the future, so.
Yeah.
You know, you want to give it your best shot based upon what the assets are there, and what's, what's nice about anything off of 20, everything's already in place. Surface water, sanitation, power, pretty much everything is fairly close for any developer, where you're not going a quarter mile or a couple hundred yards even to tap into a eight-inch ductile iron water line that, even though you could put the density in there, there might only be a four-inch or two-inch PVC line that goes up a street, that, that wouldn't accommodate a five-acre parcel if you want to put 20 houses on, you still got to run that line at 280 bucks a lineal foot. So all those factors do come in, yeah.
So if, 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 if commissioners have, have any thoughts about, you know, how we could, if, if there's reason to believe that eight dwelling units to acre, per acre is an, is a, is an underestimate for the commercial zones, and I suspect it probably is, but I'm, we were kind of faced with the dilemma when we were doing the, the land capacity analysis of like, okay, well, well, what should it be then, you know? And I think in some cases it might be higher, and in some cases it might be lower, so what's a, what's a number that we can pick that's defensible, that, that is also realistic?
It's not just going to be like a, an overall one-size-fits-all. There are different sections of the MC zone that would allow for a higher density than other ones, for limiting factors from the width of a property to maybe bordering railroad tracks or, or whatever it is. But I don't think it would be that tough to come up with.
Okay. Well, that's something for, for us to, to maybe investigate a little bit further. I think that, you know, there's, there's reason, I think the reason why a lot of communities just end up, you know, picking a number that's in their code is because there's so many, like, every site is so different, right? And you can't, you can't make any generalizable assumptions from any one's site, but you kind of add it all together and you go like, okay, that number's probably close to right. Otherwise, the other way to do it, and I think this, this may be where, where staff and Planning Commission could, could be of some help to us, is if we look at the, kind of the recent development history under the current code, I mean, we've done that to some degree with the, the building permit analysis to look at, like, you know, what types of units were developed in which zones, but to really look at, if you have a project that comes in in a zone, if you've got a redevelopment in the MC zone, how many dwelling units did you actually get, if any, right? If there was a project, a couple of projects we can point to that's, that like, that, oh, this is the number we actually got, then we could use that as a baseline for saying, oh, this is a reasonable assumption. You know, we go, okay, what was the, what was the developable acreage, how many units got built, and then maybe that's a good estimate. You know, otherwise, you know, otherwise we just kind of have to go, well, okay, well the number in code is, is as good of an estimate as we're going to get, so. I mean, the other way you could do it, I think, without getting it to at a site-specific level, is you could look at, you could say, okay, if there's vacant land, we could apply a certain density, and if it's like a redevelopment case, for example, like a, like a strip mall that's near the end of its life, or a, a very old single-family house in a commercial zone on not a huge piece of property, then maybe you have a different density assumption. So you could kind of do it So you could kind of do it partially vacant versus totally vacant and have a different assumption for that. That's one way you could do it. So those are kind of the, the three options as I see it, is like, just pick the number in code, use recent development as a, as a benchmark, or apply different assumptions for vacant versus partially vacant.
You know, in, in the development world, nothing's linear.
Yeah.
Okay? And when you look back through 2014 and what's happened through 2014, you were coming out of the Great Recession. Financing was tough for a lot of builders. You then hit a pandemic. Okay? So utilizing the past 10 years to make a prediction on what you're going to see from 2025 forward is anybody's guess. However, when things do move in a cyclical set of events, yeah, we, we have a pretty good idea as to, based upon what has happened since we've put certain pieces of code in place. And we have some really good examples, I believe, to come up with a better number to take a look at the individual residential zones. And as I mentioned, anything three acres or greater needs to be part of the density calculation. And we absolutely have examples for you of existing projects and projects that are proposed. And I actually have a nice little site plan here for you as well, that you could see how the mix was incorporated into this one particular project that the RJ group is proposing up on township called Dukes Hill. So that, actually, I, I think this is the poster child of what our PRD is really capable of. So, anyway.
I'm, I'm assuming, does staff have that?
It was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn, okay. But, but there is a site plan on file somewhere that could give us like a-
There's a couple.
A guess.
Yeah, they, they backed it off a little bit from the original proposal in 2021. But just from an education standpoint of what is capable in a PRD, this is a good example of how, that's all I'm saying, of how they mix different types of housing styles and what you can do. You have 60% requirement of single-family houses, but then they knock things down only 2,500 square feet, duplexes, and a whole host of other housing configurations, which is how we're going to get that density, right?
Yes. That is, that is one very, very effective way of getting that. You know, so, for example, if, depending on the, you know, if you look at like the R7 zone, for example, if you were to, if we were to change the, the density assumptions and the housing types that you'd expect to see, that would help quite a bit, I think. I think that would, that would certainly, it might not get you all the way there, but it would probably make a couple hundred, at least a couple hundred unit.
Oh, easily. I, I have, I have 62 acres here-
So.
Of known properties that I've been on, that I know the critical areas, and I have a base calculation I'll share with you later on. But you can get some serious numbers in just in certain segments. I mean, we have one particular parcel, it's over 40 acres. And I want to say the critical areas on it, maybe 15, 20% of it, that's it.
And you said it was 65?
I have, I have the, I'll, I'll talk to you after.
Okay.
I have a whole spreadsheet for you, because I did the same thing. I don't, I look at the gross, usually, it's not, you have to take a percentage of it. And I usually hit it with a 55% or 60% that's actually developable. And I, I just take different examples of like, I know on a single-family, I'm 6,500 square feet, so I can what if at the death? I'm still coming up with well over 1,000 people, just even on one section of town.
Interesting, yeah. If you've got-
I'll run it through you. Yeah. It's important that you understand that, too. Because when you look at the code that we already have in place, as well as some of these specific parcels, yeah, we're, we're going to put a lot of potatoes in the five-pound bag, saying-
You're suggesting you may have more than five pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag?
You have to get rid of the airspace in between.
Matt, were you hoping to do an overview of this whole thing tonight? Or is it, is it good for you to get details along the way and extend it another month or whatever?
This is, this is helpful. I mean, I think that, that, you know, ultimately, so the, the second part of this meeting about like the housing options, that's a, it's a useful exercise because there's some kind of non-map change things in there that can be really helpful to have in the plan, just because of focusing on specific housing types. Like, for example, I know in the, in the public comment, we heard about, you know, the, the like affordable, single-family, and that was expressed at the last planning commission meeting as well, I believe. And so if you, if there are, you know, programs or funding options that, that the city can support in the comp plan that are not, you know, just related to code changes or map changes, that's important, too. We want to kind of get the temperature on those things as well. The final, you know, there may be changes to the, the, the capacity numbers, and we can kind of run that again with some of this information and, and get a more, kind of winnow down to what that number, a little closer to what the, the actual capacity number is and what the, the gap, if there's a gap remaining, what that might be. But some of the, some of the coach, some of the programmatic things that we're going to discuss in the second part, I think, will, will, will be relevant no matter what, because it's, you know, again, you're, you're focusing on a specific housing type, not necessarily in a specific part of town, but, you know, in a, just kind of a city program or funding mechanism, you know, like if the city's going to do ground leases for nonprofit builders or something like that, doesn't, it's not tied to a particular property or zone. It's a thing that the city can, a program that you can encourage the city to set up a program to do this. And, and so that's, that's helpful no matter what. So, yeah, so, I mean, feedback on the, on the capacity numbers is helpful because that will help us further refine this information. And also, I think some of the housing option work is, is, is a useful thing to discuss no matter what the final number is. Does that answer your question? Okay. Any other comments about the density figures on here that we can, that we can explore at the moment? Okay. In that case, we'll go to the next slide, please. So some of the, this is, again, I said, there is, there's several different kinds of assumptions. There's the, the density assumptions, but then there's also some of this development assumptions. And some of this gets to what Commissioner Fatisi was talking about a few minutes ago. I think, Commissioner, you said that you had like, you assumed that like 55 or 60% or of a property might actually be developable. Some of that is kind of reflected here. So like, if, when you're looking at like a whole zone level, there's these thing, these market factors and infrastructure deductions. What that does is it takes the gross acreage of a site and essentially leaves you with somewhere between, well, it depends, we differentiated large lot versus small lot, but essentially it leaves you with, usually it leaves you with somewhere between like 50 and 60% of a site, which actually works out pretty well to what the numbers you were looking at were. So just to kind of give you a, a sense of that, that the household size, this is just for predicting, you know, the, the, the population that your, that your existing land can accommodate, because we wanted to do that calculation as well. We use the most recent data, 2.58 per household, occupancy rate 96%. That was based on recent data that, your previous plan was based on older data that was like 92%. And then just as a note on the, this isn't really as relevant to the employment discussion, but your previous plan did not assign capacity to the SWIFT Center because the environmental impact statement had, was still being worked on. And so they, they basically said, well, we're not going to assign capacity to this, but it will at some point. And so we used the EIS number and assigned capacity to the SWIFT Center for employment.
So here's a question, right? And I used a different number because I think mine is a lot more common sense. 2.58, okay? If I have a single-family house with three or four bedrooms, how do I come up with 2.58 per household? 2.58 is a two-family apartment. It's, it's more of an effective calculation. So that is way under what the reality really is. Is that a number that we're tied to? So if I have a 4,000-square-foot, single-family house, there's no way that there's only going to be 2.58 people in that, that house.
That's a citywide average. And so you're also including like, so this, and that's, this is from the Census Bureau, so the household survey, you know, the, the community, American Community Survey and the Decennial Census, they, they use, they're different data sources, but they look at, they end up kind of getting the same number, depending on the, the, the survey you're talking about. But this is for the overall city. So what that number includes is not just families. So we're not talking about, we're not talking about population, the, the household size of single-family homes. We're talking about, you include the hundreds of one- and two-person households, predominantly like older adults living alone or with a, or with their partner. And those are going to be one- or two-person households. That brings the number down quite a bit. So your family, your average family size, and a family is defined very specifically in the census, is probably closer to like 3.4 on average. But because of one-person and two-person households, it drags that number down citywide to 2.58.
However, to be more effective, to get a better number, okay? We already know certain zones, we're going to have that 2.58. That, that would be a practical number. I use 2.5 for the UVMU. Okay? However, if I start looking at PRDs, or if I have a regular base R7 or R5, I'll tell you, that number's going to be a lot higher than 2.58. So as long as we have the ability, or maybe we don't, this is the one-size-fits-all, which is not accurate, because you might have a good portion of the city that has a different type of housing style that will accommodate a different density than 2.58. So I believe it's important to come up with an, an effective, accurate number as to what we have, it's already been, I'm sorry, provided for, where we don't set things up where all of a sudden, we blow that 16.5 number out, and now all of a sudden, we're accommodating 22,000 people. Where our capital facilities, infrastructure, none of that's even going to be able to handle it. So accuracy on those numbers, I think, is really important, not just generalizing based upon a census throughout the United States.
It's, it's the, it's the census data for Seidra-Woolley, just to be precise. This is, that's not a national figure. That's for the city of Seidra-Woolly.
Which we know has changed.
Sure. I mean, also, those data are collected over a five-year period. So I think this is the 2023, no, 2022, five-year estimate. So that's data collected between 2018 and 2022. I mean, communities do change. Household size doesn't usually change super rapidly, at least, at least on a, in order, you know, if you're talking about like a difference of three years, those data usually don't change a ton. They can over a 20-year period, for sure. But again, that's, that is Seidra-Woolly-specific, that 2.58. But what, what some communities have done, Commissioner, and this may be of interest here, is have a different household size for multifamily versus single-family. And that, that, that's-
But that's realistic.
Yeah, that's, that's a little more realistic.
I use totally different numbers for my single-family versus my UVMU.
It also, it also doesn't, and again, to some degree, I, you don't necessarily have a population capacity shortfall, at least according to my current numbers, which will get revised. It's, it's more a question of the housing units. So it, in a, in essence, because you have to plan for slightly more housing units than would actually be needed to meet your population target, your population number isn't actually going to matter all that much. But I hear you that you'd prefer to see like a differentiation. And so if we've got, if, if you have some, what you think are some accurate figures on household size for apartments versus single-family homes, we can use those, if, as long as it's defensible and we can cite it.
I used 1.8 for UVMU for those two projects. I even knocked it down even further, because there are studios in, in these different buildings.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's probably reasonable for a, for a UVMU project, that might be reasonable. And then for single-family homes, I, I mean, I think the Census Bureau has, like I said, they differentiate household size versus family size. And like I said, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think the household, the family size, the average in Seidra-Woolly was in the threes somewhere, and that's probably more-
He used 3.5.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think-
3.5, 1.8.
Okay. So that's, that's a possibility. I'll double-check that against the, the Census Bureau number, but that seems reasonable. And I think we can probably, again, this is, this matters for, for consistency, but in terms of your housing number, it doesn't really matter, just because your population number, you're going to exceed capacity-wise, anyway. But, okay, yeah, that's helpful. Any other comments on the development assumptions, questions? Next slide, please. So critical areas deductions, again, not being able to do like a, a site-by-site survey of every parcel in the city, we kind of have to use the data that are available. And the, the deductions and assumptions that we use here are for floodways, floodplain, steep slopes, streams and buffers, utility easements. So that's not a critical area, per se, but we did actually do some easement mapping and removed like the pipe, the pipeline and the power line easements, which, which have a pretty sizable footprint on, on areas of the city. So we removed those. And then for, for wetlands and the 100-year floodplain, we had a deduction of 50% of the area of, the buildable area of affected tax lots to account for that kind of uncertainty of where a wetland actually is, because you don't know where it is until you go out and delineate it. And the same for the floodplain, because, because of the, the, like, you know, reasonable use exemptions and things for, for floodplain sites and the, the fact that you can still build something somewhere on, on a lot of floodplain sites, because it's only partially affected. We just used a, a citywide, the, any, any parcel that had 100-year floodplain located on it in, in any way, got a 50% buildable area deduction. Again, not site-specific, but so we just kind of averaged it out over the, over the zone. Any questions about that?
This is incorporated in our, in our zone. As a matter of fact, that was, when we were doing the PRD, it took us a couple of years to do it. We had different builders here. And they were like, oh, base my density on, okay, if you have a 10-acre lot and only one of it's buildable, okay? Wanted a density for the whole 10 acres, whatever. Like, no, it doesn't work that way. So we, or, a lot of our code is based upon what's actually buildable. So it does deduct that right off the bat, before you can even put a calculation on the amount of units you can put on it.
Okay. So I, so I think that, that, that is probably reasonable, then, to assume like for future development, that you're going to get a deduct, like, there's just, you're just going to have a part of it. On average, again, looking at this at the zone level, you're going to have, for parcels with wetlands, you know, some portion of it is going to be unusable. We don't know how much it is, so we just kind of have to make that assumption. Next slide. And this is the, so this is the, where it, where it, it's kind of hard to read here, but when I said that, that we had looked at the, no, this isn't the pipeline one. So this is, this is kind of, this is kind of everything. This is the Housing and Population LCA Land Capacity Analysis results. So you have capacity for, according to the, according to the numbers that we have now, which I, I understand, we'll be making some tweaks, a little over 2,000 housing units and almost 5,000 people. And so again, like I, like I mentioned, population is not going to be your, your stopping point or, you know, potential issue with capacity. It's more the 0 to 80%. Those, that will also change once we kind of tweak the calculations, as we've discussed here this evening. And just to kind of orient you on all this, so, so the, that total number that you see in the, the third column that has numbers in it, that's the, if you just kind of do the calculation of buildable land, so that's, you know, gross area minus critical areas minus easements, you know, kind of what, what do you have left? And then you apply the density assumptions. And then you deduct the market factor and the infrastructure, so that's the provision of things like stormwater and right-of-way, you come up with an estimate of housing units. So that just kind of walk you through the methodology here. And the population, again, is a multiplier based on persons per household, which that will get possibly tweaked as well. But I think that probably, I don't think that'll affect your, whether or not you have capacity for people. It's more the, the specific housing types in specific income brackets. So any questions about this? I know it's a lot of information.
No, it's not. Actually, I have a model here, and we'll talk about that, R5. And I'm going to show you 475 units on only 65 acres.
Is this the PRD thing you were talking about?
It's important you understand that.
Yeah. No, that's, that's great. That's, that, that helps you guys. Next slide. So this is not totally germane to the conversation, because this is focused on employment, but I just wanted to put this out here as well. So, so once you account for the, you know, we, we had those assumptions about jobs per acre for different, different jobs per acre for commercial versus industrial, but including for commercial versus industrial, but including the Swift Center, we've got, you, you've got plenty of, of employment capacity. So employment capacity is not, is not an issue, at least as far as demonstrating your commitment to, to the GMA in that regard. Next slide. So, where I mentioned that, that you can, that we took the pipeline units out and also took that out of, so you, when you talk about units that have been built in the last, you know, stuff that's not reflected in the, you know, wasn't reflected in the assessor data, or is still, you know, permits have been issued but construction is still ongoing, that actually is super helpful, because you get to take that off the, the housing that you have to plan for. It also gets taken out of your capacity, but on the plus side, when you have stuff that gets built that's slightly different than what the density assumptions were, in some cases, that can really help you, like, you know, for, I know, in your R7 zone, you've had, probably because of PRDs, as was discussed, you've had some townhomes and duplexes mixed in there, and so that, that's actually been a pretty diverse set of, of, of units that have come online, particularly in that zone, but elsewhere as well, is that that works to your advantage, because then you're getting, you're getting multifamily units where the zoning primarily identifies, single-family units. I understand there's the PRD thing as well, which sounds like there's gonna be a huge help for you, but when you a- account for that all, you end up with what, what I've got here, which is in the, basically the 81,600 there, that is the 80% threshold for Skagit County. And you've got a deficit in that category, and then the middle housing category, so that's, you know, moderate income around the median, 80 to 120. You've got a surplus, and a smaller surplus, but still a surplus in the 120% and over area median income. So your, your overall, you know, overall, you've got more units of capacity than you need, once you kind of make those deductions, but the variation in there is related to the housing type that you have capacity for. These numbers will also change, once we kind of change some of those density assumptions, which I think will be really interesting to see, and we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting. But just to kind of show you how all this gets kind of winnowed down into this kind of smaller table, where we look at income brackets and capacity versus need, and then what your, what the depth, the size of the deficit, and the, whether it's a surplus or deficit. So, that's what this shows here, is that you have capacity for, this will go up, but 2016 units, and that you've got a deficit for, is it under 80% and a surplus for over 80%.
Just a question here, you know, I, I get the whole overall intent of government at this level, this is all private land, right? So, it's, it's market, the market determines what the cost of housing is, and there's a lot of different factors. So to say that we're in a surplus or a deficit on somebody else's property, it's like me, I in my neighbor's yard saying, well, you need this over here, and, but I'm not willing to throw a penny out there to make something happen. So how was, even though we accommodate it in our zoning, our calculations, as far as what the capacities and different styles and everything are, why is that on the city or anyone here or on the legislative side to make that happen, when nobody's coming on out and saying, well, here's the pot of gold, go over to the Hamiltons here and say, I'll take your 12 acres and turn it into below-market housing for the 1,360 housing needs? How's that all happen?
Well, you know, it's, it's a good question, Commissioner, and I think you are not alone in asking that question, and-
I'm sure not.
What, what, what I, what I would just say to that is that, is that luckily, the city is under no obligation to actually ensure that housing that meets any income threshold gets constructed. That is a market decision. There are circumstances where, you know, where you, you've got levers that you can pull for things like, you know, the MFTE discussion, for example, where you can like try to incentivize stuff, but you don't have to, all you have to show is that you have the, essentially, the capacity for non-single-family units of sufficient density to meet your the short, the, the, whatever allocation you have of below-market, below median income households. And as long as you have that theoretical capacity, then you're under no obligation to prove that it gets built. You will have to, the city does have to at, at five-year intervals, so the, the five-year check-in in between major plan updates, you have to kind of look and see like, okay, is development happening the way we thought it would when we passed all these, the development regulations? And if not, like if things, if something's screwy, like how do we fix it? But you don't have to submit anything to the state showing like, hey, congratulations, Cedar Woolley built exactly 851 units of, of low, low-income housing. Doesn't, luckily for you all, it does not work like that. So this is an effort by the state to get communities to be more detailed than their planning for below-market, below-market rate housing, but it does not obligate the city to ensure that that gets built.
You know, we, we built some of that into our cottage housing structure that we're still refining, but we do have that language in there. We were looking at, let's say, different land trusts that actually own the land, and that if there was a resale of that property, it couldn't exceed certain levels to keep it at a level where it's that first-time homebuyer, or people that are below these different thresholds. So we put that in on the cottage housing side.
That's wonderful.
That I believe that we'll probably have a public hearing on that within the next month or two. But, yeah, that was one of the main discussions when we were putting that together, and I think that answers the earlier question from Habitat for Humanity, as to where that actually is being deployed. So, yeah, that was definitely part of the conversation, and it was quite a lot, it was actually one of your staff members that brought that up.
Yeah, yeah, the, the ground, like, ground leases and things, yeah, that's a, that's a, that, when I, when I talked about like, tools the city has that are not map-based, that's a really good one, is that if cities have, you know, land, if, if cities are, like, own land that's not being used for something, you can offer ground leases, it really, you know, like 99-year, basically free ground leases to nonprofit builders. That's a, that's a great example of the type of tool.
And then she actually gave great examples, went out on Orcas Island and, I think, Mount Vernon was another one. Shelter Bay, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great tool. Next slide, please. So that's kind of it for the LCA, it sounds like, and Commissioners, if you have any spreadsheet, site plan, any of that stuff, if that's, if that's not already in staff's hands, make sure we get that. And so what we'll do is, you know, make some of these, make some of these tweaks to the numbers and, and, and kind of get you a revised version of this. That'll be really, I'm, I'm really curious to see how the, the PRD kind of looking at those site plans, and if we, if we're able to look at that and say, this is a, you know, this is a, a good kind of basis for looking at, at capacity on those properties where it's allowed, that could, that could be a game changer, you know, speaking, speaking freely, that could be a game changer for your total, you know, your, your, your capacity versus allocations for some of that. I, I'm, I don't, I can't promise we'll get all the way there, I'll have to take a look at it, but I'm very interested to see what that gets you.
This will hold water.
Excellent.
Absolutely, yeah.
So if there's no, if there's no further questions, we can move on. Tom, if you want to queue up the next.
I did, scratch myself.
We will get a copy of this.
Of the slides?
The slides, yeah.
Yes.
Awesome, thanks.
Yes.
Commissioner DuVoyne, so you got something to say?
I, I had a question, table one. On table one.
Table one?
Didn't the unincorporated area change with time? So, I guess when I read this, my question was, the city's, the city limits, and it unincorporated area changed between 2022, 2024, 2045, correct? So that assumes that the unincorporated area stays the same.
The unincorporated area, that, so the unincorporated UGA, it, it's, it's kind of an interesting, it's a very interesting question. So, the, a, a UGA for a city like Cedar Woolley is, is designed so that it has enough capacity for the, the whole community to grow for the next 20 years, but you can't develop in it until services are available, and you can't put services in it until it's annexed. And so, the city can't assume that any of the area in the UGA will for sure become part of the city within the planning period, because that's not the way that the county and the cities set the rules about annexations. So the, your current UGA will get smaller over the next 20 years, because there, I'm sure there will be annexations here and there. But until the city annexes that land, it can't assume that it has the capacity that's located on that land. So all the stuff we're talking about in the land capacity analysis is looking at just current city limits, because the rules that, the county-wide planning policies that the county and the cities agreed to, say that the county, the cities can't, can't assume the capacity within the UGA to be part of their kind of capacity for their comp plan. So, in many ways, this is a good, it's a good argument for, for doing annexations when it makes sense, you know, because, because that, I know it's, it's complicated financially, but that will help you meet, depending on how those annexations go with what the zoning is applied and the, the, the way the development is done there, that can help you meet your, you know, like, get, you know, have the capacity for your targets, but at this point in the process, you can't count it until it actually is part of the city. Does that make sense? So the UGA will get smaller, and so that's why that, it only has 2% of the growth, is because there's an assumption there that there will be annexations happening, but we can't say exactly where.
So, so Matt, to add to it, the UGA boundaries are in addition to our city limits, and those have not changed. We haven't gone into that area, it's a future potential area, but those boundary lines are the same that they were even 10 years ago. UGA expansion on a boundary is a real big deal, and that's not the case here. But we haven't annexed anything in our UGA, no.
But the city has expanded into the UGA recently.
Yeah, the Hanson annexation.
Yeah, the Hanson, yeah.
Yeah, so you can expand into your UGA, I wouldn't say easily, but a lot more easily than expanding the UGA. The, the UGA's very rarely get bigger unless there's some, something, you know, some major, you know, regional employment, you know, something happens regionally, employment-wise, like if, you know, if Boeing decides to build a factory in, in Burlington or something, that would probably cause UGA's to expand, but like barring something crazy like that, it's, it's very, it's very hard for that to happen. Annexations, while they are, you know, expensive and, and complicated, you don't, you don't have to wait 10 to 20 years to change the boundaries for the city. Annexations are something the city can do when it makes financial sense for the parties involved, but it, it just, it just kind of eats into that UGA. The UGA doesn't usually get bigger, at least not on very frequent intervals.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead. On this next part, yeah.
Okay, on this next part, what we've asked Facet to do is take a look at housing policy options that we can consider that would meet our targets. They sent out a draft memo a couple of weeks ago, Nicole and I sat down and went through it and responded back with some comments, but are you ready to go over this now? Which, which thing do you want?
Is this considered new business now?
It is, yes, I'm sorry.
So, 7:50, move on to new business, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Matt. Thank you, Dr. Glover. So, the way we set up this next portion was basically to ask the same two questions on each of the housing land use options that we presented in this, in this draft memo. So again, this was in response to the, the desire from the Planning Commission after the last time we spoke about the land use element, to look at what are some, some non, like, map change options that could be considered for, whether it's a specific, like, economic segment, or, or more broadly speaking, what are some things that, that the city could do? And what we want essentially is for the Planning Commission to, we're asking you to, you know, to look at each of these options and kind of answer two questions, you know, the first question being like, is this something that is worth pursuing? And, and if so, what are some limitations or concerns or additional context that would be helpful for us, as we would then turn that into policy language and potentially in some cases, you know, like draft code or draft development regulations? So, next slide. So each of these, so what I did was I took the, I took the memo that we have in your packet, and I turned it into slides, and I'll go through each kind of section of the memo on a slide, and then each of these specific options, the ones in green on the screen here, are the, the tool, or the, the, the options or the tools, and then we'll ask the same question, and it'll pop up on the screen about each of these specific things. So the overall category is infill redevelopment, then there's these three different options or strategies. Multifamily on undeveloped land, which is specifically talking about residential units in like the, in the mixed commercial and central business district zones. And then neighborhood infill, so that's, I mean, your cottage housing is an example of that. Code that you have to do to meet state requirements on accessory dwelling units is another example of that. Shadow plating, which was actually something that we learned about from city staff, which is really interesting, another example of that. And then tweaking design standards as needed to accommodate some of these different housing types. And then the last of these three is add-on to existing structures. So, you know, if you, if you're able to add-on some housing to an existing mixed, mixed-use building or something, how does that work? Are there any, are there any changes that might be needed in the bulk restrictions, like setbacks in the, in the MC zone in particular? So those are the three options within this category of infill, so we'll kind of go through them one at a time. Next slide, please. So, oh, this is supposed to be out of order. Okay, so this is the, this is another one, I don't know, I think we just went through all of them first and then asked the questions on each of them. So, okay, so, density bonus, this is something that, that can be, that you can offer in, this is especially applicable in things like a CBD or UVMU or, or maybe even the MC zone, for example, where you would allow a density bonus, additional units per acre, some number, doesn't matter at this stage, but you could condition it on those units being, a covenant being enacted on those units to ensure that they stay affordable for a certain period of time. So that would be one, one, a, a way that you could use a density bonus for a specific policy aim, which is, you could target a specific income bracket and say, hey, you can get an additional, you know, two dwelling units an acre or something, if the additional units are, there's covenants recorded that they'll be affordable at certain mark, certain percentage of the market rate for a length of time, 20 years or something, for example. So, that's a density bonus. Next slide. So this is the, the first set of questions here. Is this a strategy you think is worth pursuing? And if so, are there any cautions, limitations, or additional focus areas you'd like to see? So first question, are density bonuses an option that Commissioners think is worth considering? And then, we can move on to the second question after that.
I've seen this done in other jurisdictions, particularly Shoreline, right next to light rail stations. The issue here is fire equipment. We can only go so high based upon the equipment that we have to, you know, handle an emergency. So that was part of the reason why, even in UVMU, it's limited to five stories. But I've seen other communities do exactly this. So putting it in the code is one thing, having somebody incorporate it's another, and the average median income, depending on where you're at, for instance, in King County, the average median income's something crazy like $131,000 a year. So to get the density in Shoreline, you need 70% of that AMI to be considered affordable housing. Do 70% of $131,000. I mean, and that's now affordable housing. So there's all different ways to calculate that number. But putting it in there, I don't think it, it would be a limiting factor for anybody, but they, they need to show up and do it, right?
So, so you're, to summarize, you're saying that, that, that you don't think this would necessarily be, make a big difference for you, because the limitation is not the density, it's the height?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any other comments on this?
So it's interesting, my husband actually has talked about tall buildings right before I came here, and he was talking about one of the beautiful things about Cedar Woolley, in his opinion, is he can look straight across and see the hills and see the snow. And he's like, I hope Cedar Woolley never becomes a town or a city, that the buildings are so tall, you can't see that beautiful view when you look out.
We can't do it, we, we just simply can't do it, yeah. See, all our code gets put to the fire chief and runs through them as well, as to, you know, what's feasible from even their perspective.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, especially in our, you know, our CBD, we want to keep that historic, so there's limitations there for other reasons outside of housing availability, and the design guidelines, and a whole host of other factors that are in place in the different zones. Where UVMU is the first time we went vertical to five stories in the city, and we needed it as a mixed commercial, where you have commercial and a defined amount of square footage you had to put in that building, before we'd allow you to go that extra height on the residential side. But putting that in there to say, hey, if you go five stories, that last one, I, I don't really know what they would be getting out of it. I don't really know what they would be getting out of it that they already don't.
Sure. Do you think that, do you think there's any circumstance, any of you where, where they might hit a, a density max in the code before they hit the height limit? Are there any, anything that you could think of there? I want to make sure that, you know, we're not just writing something off in case there's a...
Parking. So depending on the number of units, there needs to be a sufficient amount of parking. We found that the calculations we have, the formula we have, has been pretty effective, and it's held steady through pretty much many projects in town, unless they put in, you know, depending on what it is, if there is garages, right, then you can extract on something like that, but not on a multi-story building. You're not going to have a garage.
Yeah, because you'd still hit the height limit issue unless they, unless it was underground. Right?
Yeah, and I think one thing as far as transportation with our city, so many people drive, and it's primarily seems to be two-earner income, or two-earner households. So you have two people driving to a place to work, and parking's definitely an issue. We're not going to be able, like a metropolitan area, to go down to electric bikes, and that's it.
And people do have children, so we have teenagers with cars.
Well, I guess I have two thoughts on this. I think density bonuses, I think it would, if we could find a viable way not to obviously exceed what we can handle with our fire response, but it doesn't necessarily have to be vertical, does it? That's just an example.
Correct.
There are other ways to get that. So I think it, it might be good to not write it off immediately if there's something we can do. Also, the other thing is, you know, the city's going to grow. Eventually, ladder truck, I know they're insanely expensive and everything, but, you know, fire response has to change for growing cities. And it wouldn't be a wise idea, I think, to do it in this scenario. But in La Conner, there was a case where there was a ship building or boat building company that wanted to increase the height of one of their industrial buildings, and it was a height that was higher than was allowed in that zone. And also, there were concerns about fire response and everything. But I believe that there was an agreement because of the multiple fire districts could respond to that. And if they had an agreement with a district that had a ladder truck, then it was something that they were allowed to do, and they were allowed to expand the height of that building. It was kind of a unique circumstance, wouldn't really apply here. We don't want to be putting ourselves in, in a situation where we can't respond, obviously. But there, I do think there are options out there, and just because, I mean, everything eventually has to expand, and we have to plan for that. But of course, I guess the question is, how much do we want to plan for that now or wait another 20 years? So, just some things I'm thinking about. I'm not really, I guess, asking a, kind of a rhetorical question here. I don't know.
Yes, thank you. If there's no other comments at the moment, move on to the next slide, please. So, this is, an example of this is, actually, your cottage housing code is a good example of this. But middle housing is something that's, the term you may have heard. The state has requirements for communities over a certain size that they have to adopt middle housing ordinances. Cedar Wully's not, not, not there. The population threshold is 25,000. So you're not going to get there within this plan, planning period. But some communities have chosen to take a look at specific middle housing kind of development types and develop some code on it, and have even gotten some grants to do it. So for example, we're also working with Coopville in Island County, and they decided on their own that they were going to work on some middle housings. They worked on, on some code on that. They focused on like, you know, the state has like nine different types. They focused on like three or four of them. So they took a really targeted approach. And communities who don't have to do it can actually be a little more discerning about which housing types then they want to develop code on and, and where. Next slide, please. So, so a couple of examples of that. So, some of it's already being done, right? So the cottage housing is currently being done. Sounds like that's close. The ADUs is something that you'll have to tweak your code to comply with state requirements. But there are also a bunch of other development types. So, like duplexes and townhomes in particular are, for a community the size of Cedar Wully, figure out some ways to expand the, kind of the areas where duplexes and townhomes could be built and/or maybe look at some in the R7 zone. I know you have your PRDs, but if there's something, if there's another development type that might be appropriate in that zone, like whether it's fourplexes or unit lot subdivisions or anything like that that would potentially, especially in the case of townhomes, you could kind of promote homeownership if you combine something like encouraging townhomes with other financial incentives that could help bring that down to, to the level where a, you know, under median income household could afford it, because townhomes can also be expensive, to be frank.
Okay, we do have that in the code.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's in the PRD. Okay, so that's, that's, I'm going to give you examples of how that was deployed. So, yeah, when we have three acres or higher that I've already, you know, and some, some of these plots are 40 acres, 10 acres, 15, and that, that's a way of accommodating what that density would be with a more affordable style of housing, with a duplex, townhouse. We can go as small as 2,500 square feet, I believe, on a unit. And in this one project, they have some examples of how they utilize the townhouse configuration, I think four units at a time. Well, we'll take a look at it. And like I said, this was a really good example of maxing out that, that PRD scenario. So it'll be a really good thing to look at when we look at some of this other acreage to actually calculate what that density is going to be.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, I think that could, this could, that could, I mean, if we can incorporate, if we can look at, point to your PRD code and say like, okay, some of this stuff is already, you know, we can already kind of account for that, then maybe that's something we don't have to pursue at this time. We can just kind of get that incorporated into the LCA calculations and, and mark yourself job well done on that one. Next slide. I think that's just the, the questions. So, since it sounds like these are kind of already, already possible and, or done, let's just move on to the next slide. So these are a few other different options. So, inclusionary zoning, which is requiring a percentage of affordable housing in designated areas. So you have to have a certain percentage of units that are available to income, certain income thresholds. And again, that would be like recorded in a covenant. That's inclusionary zoning. Other zoning changes, so if we're talking about non-map stuff, you know, some uses might be conditional use permits currently, like mobile home parks or other low-income housing types. I, I think you have to, there's a, I believe, Tom, if I'm correct, there's a, the city's going to have to be working on some code specific to like permanent supportive housing, because there's nothing specifically in the code right now. So ensuring that something like that, depending on what zone you're in, you could consider making it like an administrative use rather than a conditional use permit that kind of streamlines the permit processes for types and moves them from, you can kind of show the state like, hey, we're, we're making things administrative rather than quasi-judicial. That's, that's a step in the right direction. That can be a way of showing progress towards specific housing types. You could, and it sounds like this is already done through your PRD, actually. So the second one there, under that zoning code, zoning reform, may not be applicable. But, you know, we said like you can consider changing something that's like predominantly single-family and just call it like residential low-density. Sounds like that's already kind of the case in your PRD. That kind of serves that purpose already. So that one's maybe already done. But then, this one comes up again. This was something that staff actually flagged, reducing setback requirements in the mixed commercial zone. Tom, I'm not sure if you have any more information to, to add on that, because that wasn't something that we flagged. But that's, that's another tool that the city has to kind of maybe make housing a little bit easier to build in the MC zone.
Didn't we have that, the setback was specifically for parking, though, behind the building? That's why that setback is in place, and it was to account for parking for whatever, if, if somebody wanted to go residential. Didn't we, we just had that discussion barely, what, eight months ago?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and check.
So there, there was a reason for, it was, it was more of a parking requirement, where the parking would have to be behind the building, alleyway kind of based?
Okay. So maybe that one's, that one might have a different, a different reason for being that would, that would preclude producing it. Yeah, we can leave it in there as an option potentially. But so, one thing about, about the MC zone in particular that I think maybe I just didn't get that question slide in on that first slide. I had that thing about the, making it easier to build housing in, in commercial zones. For example, like not fronting a commercial street, or on like the back part of a property, or on the first floor, as long as it's not fronting a commercial street. So that, that one, I think, if we can go back a few slides, so the very first topical slide, I want to make sure I get back to this, that triggered my memory. So I think I just didn't put the question, a few more. So the, the first slide in this set, one before this. One more. This one. Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to make sure we got to this, because I think I just forgot to put a question slide in there for this one. But I want to go through these as well, because this relates. So that first one, multifamily on undeveloped commercial land, or partially developed commercial land. So the one, the, the idea here is to change the regulations so that you can get a little bit more housing potentially in different configurations on commercial zone land, especially like mixed commercial and central business district. You can make a lot of, there's a lot of ways you can do this. So I think I talked about this in the memo. But one way is to, is to make, you can allow first floor, you know, first floor commercial as long as it doesn't front a specific street. So you let, you, you show, you, you know, in your central business district, you've got several streets that you want to be predominantly commercial. So you're not going to allow first floor residential on those streets. But those properties may extend to other street frontages, or like alley access or something where you could have the back half of the building have residential on it that doesn't currently. And so it allows you to get some first floor residential that can increase the capacity in that zone. Other options might be, you know, other things to consider might be adding, I think this is in the memo as well, but the requirement that any first floor commercial in a commercial, first floor residential in a commercial zone be built to be, by the same, to building code-wise, to be able to be converted in a not terribly difficult way to commercial use if the market conditions change. So that's something that a lot of communities have done, where they say like, oh, well, we've got, you know, like a surplus of, of commercial office, but commercial retail space right now. But that might not be the case within the planning period. So we might want it to be residential now, but maybe in 15 years, market conditions change and somebody wants to turn it back into commercial. We don't want it to be, to be built in a way that would preclude that. So that's another consideration there as well.
So we changed our CBD code to allow residential on the first floor, but not the street frontage side, where it would have to be a certain percentage behind that, and the access had to be either from the side of the building or behind the building. We just did that, I want to say, about eight months ago.
Oh, so you've already done that in the CBD. Are there any other places you think that might be appropriate?
I think we just did it for the CBD, and that was part of the whole parking, every, it was, it was a pretty decent upgrade to the CBD. Even if you, if you were going to access the residential portion through the street frontage, that only a certain amount could be used for a lobby, and the rest had to be on the commercial side. So you'd be walking up to a building, and let's say you needed an elevator or whatever. That was specific percentage-wise, I think, what, we used 15% or 10% or something like that for where that access would be. But we definitely allowed, because it, it makes sense. I mean, I see a lot of convenience stores where somebody's living in the back, right, and they're operating the business up front. So that is incorporated in the code, and it's just fairly recent.
Okay. And have there been, have there been, has there been first floor, first floor residential that's been developed in the central business district in the past eight months? I know it's a fairly recent change.
Yeah, that's, that's a very recent change, yeah.
So maybe that might be something, commissioners, that, that you, are there any other zones where you think that might be appropriate, like the, just mixed commercial, or the, the mixed commercial overlay, or anything where you think that that might be an appropriate change to make as well?
Definitely makes sense to me. I was curious on the setback question in the mixed commercial. And so I, I looked up the 17, 20, 20 bulk restrictions for the mixed commercial zone. And we do have some pretty, well, hefty setbacks for, especially for if it's adjacent to residential. So I don't know if we'd want to touch those or not, but even setbacks to all other zones front is on an arterial's 20 feet, which I know is pretty standard for residential and stuff. So I don't, I don't know. And if we're talking mixed commercial here, you're having both, so. But could be some flexibility if we wanted to consider something different to get more space in there, I guess.
So for example, like if you, if you had a, if you had like residential use in the back of a mixed commercial property, maybe the setback would be less than it would be if it was a commercial use. Because I, I understand the purpose of the setback in the commercial use adjacent to a residential zone. But if you've got apartments built, you know, not on the, on the, on the highway frontage, for example, and they're fronting, they're butting up against a residential zone, then it's residential on residential, and then maybe you need a smaller setback, for example?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a thought, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this sheet, or any thoughts on that multifamily and commercial zones that we want to explore? Oh, one question that I did have related to the dense, the, the central business district question. Do you think that that might impact the density assumptions for the central business district zone to the ability to have the first floor commercial not fronting the major streets?
Can you re, can you say that again?
Yeah, so you mentioned that like the CBD, you just did that change to allow first floor commercial, first floor residential.
But on top is residential as well. I think you can go eight per building?
Yeah, so do you think, and again, the eight per building, I, I talked about this in the land capacity analysis. It's, it's kind of an awkward thing for calculation, because you don't know in the LCA, like how many, you know, how many buildings you'll have. But do you think that there's like a, when we look at capacity, is there something, is there some like additional multiplier or something that we can talk about for CBD based on that change? Do you think it actually created additional residential capacity in that zone beyond what the...
So everything there is already built. I think we only have one vacant lot, and there was a fire about, about four or five years ago. Tom, this was before you were here. So I know there's a proposed project for that site, so everything's already existing. And a bunch of, a bunch of the buildings already have residential on, on top of them. And a lot of them aren't, just aren't, you know, they don't take advantage of the height that's there. And a lot of those buildings, they're back to the 1920s, 1910s, so I don't really see. I would say to even retrofit some of them, you might have asbestos or goodness only knows what, so.
Prehispitively expensive. Okay. Well, figured I'd ask. Thank you. Okay, can we zip forward ahead again on the slides, back to where we were before? Close to the end here. So yeah, so the inclusionary zoning, I guess, next slide. We already talked about this, right? The, this is done in, you mentioned Commissioner Fatisi in Shoreline, I believe, and that might not be a great fit here, just because the, 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 I mean, like a light rail station is a good reason to do something like this. But here, it might not make much of a difference, or is that kind of what you were getting at?
It's no big deal putting it in the code, though. And like Commissioner Fryberry was saying, it doesn't necessarily need to be a four or five-story building. I've seen it done all over the country, where a developer will come in and let's say do 30 townhouses, and then X percent of it'll be for affordable housing and all the buildings... And all the builder does is they don't just put in like the granite countertops, they'll put in, you know, just a lower level of, you know, closets or kitchens or, or whatever. So that's how I've seen it done in other jurisdictions. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't put it in. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
It shows that we thought about it, right? Then it's up to whoever deploys that project to make a dollars and cents decision as the, whether they want to do it or not.
Okay. Any other thoughts about that? It can be tough to, I know it can be tough to get the, the percentage right. That's the, kind of the, the challenge with inclusionary zoning is if you set it too high, then nothing will get built. If you set it too low, then you're not necessarily making the progress for it. Like, so for townhomes, for example, usually the state says you count those in kind of the 80 to 120 bucket and you don't have a capacity issue in your 80 to 120. So really what you're talking about is how do we make a, how do we make a difference on that, you know, lower than 80% AMI number without setting the number so high that it becomes infeasible and then nothing happens? That's kind of the risk you run. So that'd be a real, something to consider when you, if, if you were to pursue this, you know, talk to the development community and figure out like what's that number that's going to make it not worth it? And then try to find that, it's a fine balance. So just something to consider with that. Next slide. So mobile home parks, other low income housing types like permanent supportive housing, for example, either outright permitted or administrative versus a conditional use permit? What are your thoughts on that?
We already have, we have several mobile home parks in town, deployed all throughout the city, by the way.
And, and is there anything that, I know sometimes there's an issue with mobile home parks of, of them getting bought up and people getting displaced. Are there any protections in your code currently for the mobile home parks that are currently?
I don't know. All I could tell you is some are better than others.
Nothing in code currently? Okay, that could be something worth, worth considering.
It probably is a conditional use permit though, I would think.
So do you think there's value in, for mobile home parks specifically, if somebody were to want to build another one? Do you think the conditional use permit is the right avenue or could it go to like an administrative decision?
I'm not even sure. If a lot of these properties, you own the land, you might be leasing the land like a lot of other places. I'm not too sure about the specifics of what we have here in town. But I know a lot of mobile home parks is you're just leasing the land. So it's not a fee, simple transaction, but some are.
Yeah, a couple of different ways to do it. Okay.
The idea is to make it, the idea is to make it easier for permitting. So, and so the question is CUP versus administrative approval. Administrative approval, we can certainly build in conditions that wouldn't require quite the review of a CUP.
You know, with something like this, since we already have designated areas for mobile homes to allow cottage housing or cottage clustering in that exact same zone. So at some point, you know, because if you come down like to the west side of town, there's one mobile home park that borders Highway nine that, I wouldn't even walk through it, I'll tell you right now. All I'm saying is at some future point, the cottage cluster newer things, you know, since we're working on that code right now to incorporate that because it accomplishes really the same goal. So.
But the cottage cluster is limited to 12, right? Or 11 or 12 units?
Right, in R15.
Yeah. In anything, I think. But the mobile home parks would probably be more than 12.
Yeah.
Depends on the size of the cottage that we put in, right? We're still trying to work out those setbacks and everything. Right now, we were talking about 10 feet versus five feet of your on top stuff. I'm just saying that we have ways to tweak this to incorporate other high density housing styles within a particular zone. So this is a good conversation is what it really comes down to.
Okay. Next slide, please. We're almost, we're almost there. This one, I think we can just go past since I think your PRD already accomplishes this. This is basically like just recategorizing single family zones as low density residential zones. We already covered this one, setback requirements. Next slide. So there's several different things on here, one of, a couple of which we've talked about previously in the, in the meeting. But we'll just go through them one at a time. Next slide. First one. This one, I think is covered in PRD as well, but this allow more duplexes or triplexes or any other type you might envision outright in residential zones rather than, rather than like a CUP or some sort of other mechanism. So I mean, if it was through a PRD, it would be by right as long as it was done through the PRD process. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be in your site plan. And I have a great example for you, so we'll be talking about that and.
So this one may not, this one may be kind of, that, that box has already been checked. Next slide.
Didn't the state just mandate that as well? I mean, we need to look at our code to make sure it's compliant with, with the state passed in the prior session as well regarding duplexes and triplexes in all existing area. Yeah.
That's the middle housing thing. Yeah, you're not required to because you're under the population threshold.
Oh, okay. What was it, 25,000 or?
5,000.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, so once you hit 25,000, you'll have to do that. But that's a problem for, a problem for future planning commissions, not, not this one. Streamline or expedite permitting, I don't think that there's a, a huge issue with the permitting pipeline in terms of like timeliness of review or anything like that. But is there anything that, that, that you all think, something that's been bugging you about process that maybe could be streamlined in the code?
Ask Tom, I think you need four more Nicole's.
Yeah.
So that, that's more an internal thing and.
We are going to be looking at that though, the next year.
We are going to be looking at that though, this year. Two different things, a couple seminars that I've asked our staff to participate in to look at our permitting process and how other cities are handling that and if there's ideas that we could incorporate into ours to make it easier. But then also we want to take a look at the state's lean program and offer that to our city to have that, where they have a person who's an expert in this to come in and take a look at our processes and find areas where we could find deficiencies in our review processes. I've done that before.
You know, have some of the builders come in.
Know the jurisdiction and, and it went really well, great ideas. So there's a couple of things, I, you know, we'll be looking at this particular thing later on this year.
A thought, just kind of a comment in general that would most directly, I think, affect the permitting process is if we were to remove the CUP requirement to ease up some of these, obviously that's less staff time, less, I mean, timelines are shorter if you don't have to, you know, go to hearing examiner or, you know. Yeah, I mean, it, it just, yeah. So gives you time to do other things. So I don't know, we kind of skipped past that for mobile home parks, but, and it sounds like we're not really looking at getting into other like triplexes and whatever I was looking in, like the R5 and R7 zones.
But I think your point is, is good. Taking a look at where we can move some things out of the CUP requirement.
In, in my experience, the more things we can make administrative, it just frees up time for, for other things. And, and so much of it, when you look at what is the purpose or what was the original intent of having something be a, a CUP or something like that? A lot of that, you know, times change, the will of council and, and well, and mostly we're driven by this housing crisis where we have to, and if, if we can do something relatively simple like that of streamlining it, you know, and, and that will actually help us, then I feel like that's a, a pretty.
We've made a lot of first, we've made a lot of first steps on that in some of our recent code and it's at the discretion of the city economic development director, i.e. Mr. Glover right here. So yeah, we, we have put that in, some of the newer stuff to streamline that process.
Worth taking another look at for some additional.
Yeah, oh no, definitely. But it's definitely in the code in, in different parts.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. Cut or reduce utility and or permit fees for housing applications that meet certain affordability thresholds. So that one kind of speaks for itself. I know that there's always a, there's always a cost recovery issue with fees, but this is something that, that other communities have experimented with. In particular, the, you know, the, the utility fees for new development can be quite high. And if there's, if there's, if there's a way to give a break on that, that is helpful. On the other hand, obviously, you know, cost recovery is an issue for cities. So Tom, I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that?
We did this in the cottage housing as well as in the ADU. So we do reduce the fees and in some cases pretty significantly depending on what you're going to be putting in. So that, that's definitely in the newer stuff.
So, yeah, I think, I think the point is that we do need to take a look at where we could possibly do that with our different housing types, different application types. I know that's been a question for some of the developers that are proposing different affordable housing type projects. We don't necessarily have that thing in code right now that does allow us to waive fees or reduce fees. But working with our public works staff and director, I think that we could, that's something that we have been talking about internally and I think it's something we could nail down and propose. The cost recovery is the question though, that the council would be asking of us. So we want to address that as well. But yes, good point.
Any other questions on this one?
Well, well, I'm, just a comment, I'm, I'm thinking that as Commissioner Fatizzi said, we, we already are thinking this way with cottage housing and other specific scenarios. So if we were to somehow just have density bonus or, you know, affordable housing bonus in the residential zones in general, and I don't know what that would look like, but then it would make sense to have that as an option. But again, how do you recoup that, the infrastructure cost? Somebody's got to pay for it.
And that's a GMA requirement as well. Development needs to pay for itself.
Right, yeah. Contradictory, contradictory aims. The state says development must pay for itself and also you should look for ways to cut permit fee costs.
There, you know, when you look at the broader picture and you've got more folks living in your community, you've got more people spending money locally, you can't make that direct connection, but there is an indirect connection. You've got more people buying stuff locally, paying more taxes, et cetera. So in time, it probably does work out and you could look at this as the cost of doing business. But of course, council would like to see something a little bit firmer than, than those comments.
Trickle down economics.
There you go. There you go. Right. So I think, I think it's, I think it's worth looking at and seeing how other cities are handling that and see what we can come up with. Certainly empathetic to that. Trickle down.
Next slide, please.
Showing the rage.
But we've discussed this already. I know that I was on, I think I was on the meeting when you guys were talking about MFTE. So this is also just a chance for me to, to hear from you what the status of that discussion is. Multifamily tax exemption. Getting some, some knowing.
I think, I think it's something that we had talked, well, we talked to council about it and I think where we landed is that let's take a look at, yet in the context of our larger discussion of housing policies and see, I think there's a place for it, but we just need to work out some of the details. There are a lot of questions from the general public too about how come, you know, they'd be springing the bill for extra taxes and that sort of thing. So we've got some questions to answer there and address. I think it's worth looking at. It may not work here for us, but we won't know that until we, do we take a look.
I feel like I recall seeing a comment, perhaps it was in one of your weekly updates, something about checking, seeing if the county had some numbers they could crunch to kind of maybe give us a starting or an idea on that. Everybody's updating comp plans right now, probably not a real good time for it, but.
Other jurisdictions in our county have, well, not all of them, but some of them have incorporated that into their, their codes. I'm not sure though that it had a strong response and I don't know how many projects have been developed. I don't, what I'm saying is I don't think there's been that many projects, but.
But actually in this county?
Yeah, I think it was Anacortes. So I'd have to go back and look again.
Okay.
And I think it was proposed and a few others that didn't fly. So I, you know, it's not something that's, everybody's grabbed onto and said, yeah, let's go with this. But.
But we wouldn't be starting entirely from scratch if it's somebody local, then the assessor is already familiar then with handling it.
I think it's working, I've heard it's working well in Bellingham and I suspect probably the largest cities, it is working well, but where they have more population to spread out that burden. So it's not such a huge hit to people, but in smaller communities, of course, you'll feel it. Yeah.
Next slide, please. So this is kind of related to that streamlined process question, but this is specific to ADUs. So in addition to the code changes that the city's going to have to make to, to bring your code that you did a couple of years ago up to meet the, the new requirements on ADUs, something that other communities have done is have like basically pre-approved plans and a streamlined process if you use those pre-approved plans for an accessory dwelling unit. That can make the process quicker and the overall building cheaper because you don't have to hire somebody to design the building. If you've got like five or six pre-approved plans and they pull it off the shelf, then the approval process is easier and it's cheaper to design and build. So that's something other communities have done. That's what this one's all about. So do you think this is worth pursuing? And if so, any other questions or thoughts?
I love the idea.
It's a no brainer.
We have acreage and we're already talking about at least one ADU on our property. I heard a pastor recently say that my generation is the panini generation, not the sandwich generation. We've got parents that are getting older and need support and we've got kiddos that necessarily can't leave the home because of costs. And so you're sort of stuck in a melting mass. And I think ADUs are sort of a neat way to handle that. You like that?
I'm liking panini generation. I have not heard that before.
That's right. It really sticks with me. I've heard it twice now from a pastor. But I think that like if we were going to do it, we wouldn't really have a definite idea of what to do. And if we could reduce costs significantly and make that a faster process, my husband and I would absolutely jump on, on to that. Because you go online and look at ADU floor plans, there's 5 billion versions of basically the same square footage. But if a city said, these three are already approved or these seven are and the local builders, we can give you an idea of who has made, done these before, maybe you can do a walkthrough. I'm on board.
That was part of the initial conversation when we did ADUs. That was like right up front. So, yeah, that was, that was a main piece of it that does exactly that. Yeah. We were like more like seven or eight different plans. Did we ever do that?
No, but it's, it's on our.
Yeah, it's definitely there. Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. That's great. Next slide, please. This is the, the, you know, work with nonprofit and housing developers to acquire land. So partner on applications, provide city land at ground, low cost ground leases, mediate discussions with sellers, et cetera. So this is really getting into that question about, you know, ways to make, whether it's Habitat or some other organization, you know, ways to make, for example, homeownership more affordable or just, you know, if, if the city has surplus properties, this is a good way to, to get some use of that property and get your affordability kind of issue dealt with to some degree as well. So thoughts about this one?
I also like this one. I know that family promise is very prevalent in our area. In fact, my daughter and I are spending the night with them Saturday night with some of their families and it's very hard for families to get on their feet. And so I love the idea of being able to reduce some of that cost. When we did a walkthrough, was it BYK? We were, we literally heard from a builder, the prohibitive costs of land plus permitting, how much money goes into just that part before you even put one board up. And so I love the idea if that's a possibility here in Seadruck Wally.
What was the name of that? You said family promise?
Family promise. It's a mobile shelter for families. It's a mobile shelter for families. They use churches in the evenings.
Interesting, okay. Any other questions or comments on this one? You've looked at a lot of words tonight, so I appreciate your patience.
Is this basically land trust? It doesn't say that in there, but this is kind of that similar concept, right?
That would be an example, a specific example. Yep.
Yeah. I think the more options we have, the better, so.
Some of the land trusts, like Skagit Land Trust, they're a preservation organization, so they don't want anything touching it.
Yeah, there's a difference between.
It's a little bit different.
There's a difference between, between like housing land trusts and like.
And protection land trusts.
Yeah, yeah, conservation land trusts, that's a whole different, whole different ballgame.
This is more like home trust of Skagit.
Yeah.
I, I remember at the joint session with council, we just had land trust, and the comment was, I don't think we have any other choice besides to adopt the land trust to bring our cost. And then the council saying, no, we don't want land trust because we want to preserve equity in the home. So I'm in favor of it, but I prefer the council saying, no, we don't want that.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think, I think they had a similar reaction to the MFTE and FTE programs as well, and that's why I thought, well, what we could do is perhaps have this discussion of all those different options in context of housing policies and flesh out some details about what they are and how they meet our, our targets by employing them and so forth, and then take another run at it and not single them out one by one like we did.
I, I think it's a viable option because by the land, the city can't tell a developer how much to charge for a building.
Right, yeah.
Temporary housing, so this is an interesting one. So this is something that the, the city's going to have to do. One of those numbers that you saw in the, one of the very first slides about the housing allocations is that it's, it's looked at separately from the permanent housing, but the part of the county-wide housing allocation process is every city has to show that it has enough capacity for, for temporary emergency housing. And then also, you also have to have, make some code changes. So for example, the city, I don't think currently has any like definition or regulations of those types of uses in code, and so part of that would be, part of this is going to have to be like recommending some, some, some draft code changes to do that. And so we're just kind of looking at, you know, as we think about that, what are some, like, whether it's zone or, or dimensional or design or a kind of other regulations that we can talk about for temporary housing, anything that you all have thought about when it comes to temporary emergency housing. So that'd be like shelters or boarding houses or that sort of thing.
We're working right now with Family Promise on a project that would do just this. So, but, but you're right, there's, we're having a tough time with the code where it isn't necessarily allowed outright. So I think they're eager to have us hurry up and address code changes, but that is an example of, of the type of project that this would fall under.
Would this include an RV in a driveway?
Which is currently. I don't believe that would fall under the state's definition of temporary housing.
Yeah, typically, like with, in the example of Family Promise, they're working with a church, and it would be setting up cottage-type housing, and the purpose would be to house people until they're able to get back on their feet. But the housing would stay there. It wouldn't leave, and it'd be open to the next person that needs it.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So I think if that was an option, it would have to be very carefully written. I'm on session at a church in Mount Vernon, which is like their board, and they were approached about using some of their land for cubes, metal boxes that would not have plumbing. They would be coming from an organization in Bellingham for temporary housing and basically would just be a bed, no plumbing. And I see a lot of concerns with sanitation and upkeep and things like that. So I think it would have to be very deliberate if that was something Siedra Wully wanted to explore.
There's a, there's a company out of Everett, which is where I live, that built, they're called, they're called pallet, which is kind of what you're talking about. And I actually, my wife actually runs a permanent supportive housing building in, in Everett, and they actually had to have people stay, their whole building had to move into those pallets and stay in them for a couple of months while they did some renovations on the building. And it's a great short-term solution, but it is definitely a short-term solution because it's not, I mean, they're, they're nice, but you definitely wouldn't be something where you'd want people staying there for months if you didn't have to, because it's not, not exactly ideal. Again, you know, better than being outside in a pinch, and I think that's really what this sort of thing is aimed at, is like, yeah, you know, very short-term, you know, you can stay there for up to 18 or 30 days or whatever the, whatever you end up writing it as, but it would definitely, is distinct from permanent housing for sure, because it, it's, 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 the built, the built function of this is to be temporary. Like, it's not a, not a good place to be permanently.
Well, and I, I had an opportunity to live in that type of housing in 07 in Iraq with the military, and I can tell you, it is definitely not a comfortable situation after about 10 days. And definitely plumbing, not having plumbing in the same room can be a major issue.
Yes, agreed. Next slide, please. Almost done. So this, Housing Land Trust, so we had it separately on the list because we know that conversation has come up before, so we've already dealt with that one. Next slide. That's it. Thank you. I really want to thank you guys for, for your thoughts on this. Those of you who had, Commissioner Fatisi, any others who had examples of, you know, sort of projects or plans or whatever, if, if, Tom, if you don't have them already, we'll, we'll get them. And we'll come back next time with some, some revised numbers on the LCA, just so you can kind of see what changing those things does to the numbers. And then, you know, we'll, we'll kind of go through this list of options and talk about what we want to pursue in more detail and get a plan for how we're going to get that in front of this body again, maybe in like April, and then, and then to council.
Great, okay, thank you. Yeah, as I was listening to you talk, I was putting down the dates that we have. June 30th is the deadline for our grant for this work, but December 31st is the deadline to get our plan done. So of course, we want to use as much of the grant as we can for this, and we have, we're doing good. But between now and June 30th, there's only three more planning commission meetings. It's just something to think about. And so our next meeting would be April 15th, but just as we did have that special meeting a couple of weeks ago, if we feel a need to have another one for the sake of coming up with some recommendation for council, you know, maybe we could take a look at that, and I'd hope you'd be open to that. I think last time, that actually worked really well, it just happened to be convenient for most everybody. But, you know, we would try to find a date that works for everyone or, or most everyone. Just food for thought, nothing you have to think about right now. But April 15th would be our next meeting.
I, I haven't been to be in the fourth Tuesday.
Every, the following Tuesday of each?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And there's nothing to say we couldn't choose a Thursday or maybe even a Wednesday or the next week or something. It's, I don't know. And I might just do a doodle poll if we come down to that, too, and see what we can get the most of.
I just need to know ahead of time and.
Yeah.
Give me a week, I'll make it work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Matt, one, one question for you. So the housing needs analysis in there, we didn't really talk about that. That was just kind of there to give us the background, basically.
Exactly.
So that won't be coming back to us. It was just kind of light reading, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. That, that's, that's going to be an appendix in the, in the plan.
Okay.
And it's just kind of to, to, the basis kind of demographically and, and cost-wise, you know, the, the income thresholds and all that, like, why, why are we here? It's the story, it's telling the story. It's an appendix.
Okay.
Thank you for reading it.
Commissioner Sexton, did you have something to say?
Sorry, I should have, no, I thought it was super interesting, very informative.
I agree. Yeah, thank you, Matt, for all the information. Is there any other questions before we close this?
I just want to say I appreciate the trickle-down reference, that was funny, and also the panini generation, so I learned a new term. I think we think that was pretty good.
Something to take away from this meeting.
You owe me 25 cents every time you use that term, I think.
Okay, oops, I shouldn't have said anything. Thank you.
Okay, if that's it, that closes a new business at 8:49, and the next item up is adjournment, and did I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Fatisi, next motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Freiberger, second. Sit. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're out of here at 8:49. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
All right.